Confirm the live stream.
Yeah. Should be good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to follow the meeting of Plank, Newington Planning Zone Commission, eleven June, twenty twenty-five tomorrow. Please stand and most please quiet. Political allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Thank you.
Just. Roll call, Lori.
Yes. Commissioner Fox.
Here.
Commissioner Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Minor.
Here.
Downline.
Commissioner Nevis. Commissioner Pascarelli. Chairman Sobieski.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Gosman. Commissioner Wakama.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pascarelli, I'd like to substitute Commissioner Wakama. Thank you. You have to leave seat.
I'll say.
Hi. Approval of the agenda?
Uh, no changes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is public participation. Items not listed on the agenda. You're welcome to come up, state your name and address for the record and. Okay.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Austin Bouchard. I'm the owner.
Take your microphone, please.
Yep. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Austin Bouchard. I'm the owner of Ten Thompson Street in Newington. I live here with my partner Nathan and his son and my unofficial son, stepson Nicholas. Uh, the reason why we're here is because we received a visit from Mr. Hinckley regarding a violation for a pigeon coop that we have in our backyard. Uh, that was mistaken for a chicken coop. Uh, we were also informed of the zoning requirement that the aviary be five feet away from the property line. It is currently two feet away uh, from the property line and we do have plans to move the aviary accordingly within the next few weeks. Uh, so we are here to basically ensure with the town that there is no issues and that the town uh, recognizes that these birds are pets. Uh, and there is no definition that I'm aware of uh, for pets in the regulations. Uh, we actually consider these pigeons members of our family. Uh, it's something that my partner Nate and his son bond over frequently. Uh, we even have like these little pigeon pants that we put on the pigeons and interact with them when they're, when we like to uh, take them in the house. Uh, so we do consider these uh, household pets. Uh, we did not recognize that they could be considered uh, otherwise. Uh, in no way do we use these birds for any sort of farming purposes. Uh, so basically that's what we're here to discuss.
Thank you. Eric?
So, um, yes, there was a complaint that was received and it was alleged they were, there was, there were chickens. From my vantage point on, on, on Gulf Street, looking down a couple houses, I could see a coop and birds in there. They were sent a, a notice violation for, for, for hens, which I rescinded because they weren't hens, but they were instead pigeons. Today, they were sent a notice of voluntary compliance because per the regulation, animals that are not hens or house pets are to be housed on five acres or more in Newington. So that is the current discussion and as they pointed out, there is no definition in our regulation of what constitutes a house pet. Because house pets are allowed to be kept, obviously. So I think they're either looking for guidance or we'll move forward and see what happens. Now, I don't know what the pleasure of the TPZ may be at this point. Just want to run its course, then we'll go that route. I don't know if you have any input or any guidance to offer them.
Thank you.
At this time.
If I remember, don't we have a, um, I thought there was a regulation said five, five chi, five or six chickens on less than an acre?
Chickens is different, right? We can do that.
Chicken, chickens are permanent.
Right. We don't have anything for pigeons. Uh, I think what we're gonna have to do is do some research on this, Paul.
Yep, yeah, and it's, it's, when you have it now. There are other regulations, like when I wrote it in Meriden where I did fowl instead of that because people had turkeys, geese, ducks. Uh, but we didn't even go into pigeons on that one. It is a little, uh, it's a little more unusual. You don't see too many uh, pigeon coops. You know, we, we kind of like, you know, you see them in movies on New York City rooftops is where we all see that kind of like old trope concept to it. But it is something that we would have to look into. Again, the interpretation of the regulations, it only says hens and house pets. So I think it'll be kind of that discussion with Health Department and to see if this is something that TPZ is, you know, if they request it, if you're willing to look into this, or if we kind of say, yep, it's hens only, that's how far you've opened the door and we continue with enforcement.
So we're gonna look into it and see what we're gonna do.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So require a change, right?
As of right now, it would be considered a violation by our regulations.
It is. And, and just so we're clear, the, the coop or the structures for hens have to be twenty feet from all property lines, not five. So an accessory structure is five feet, but if it's gonna be used to house animals, I would suspect they would probably hold it to the same standard if they decide to look into the regs.
Um, it is not permanent housing. Uh, we actually have a bird aviary in our house. Um, that's just for sheer exercise. They go in, they get their exercise, they come in our house at night. Um, that's, that's literally what it's used for.
Just so you understand, our regulations require any, any structure has to be five feet away from the property line.
Understood. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, I just don't know the difference between the five and the twenty, but with that, it's not the permanent housing for the pigeons or against what Mr. Hinckley said. It's just temporary exercise pen. That's all it is.
Right, but it, it still has to stay.
Five feet.
Yes, that's what, that's what I want to make.
Yes, sir.
All right.
But again, it's something that we would have to research and the primary reason for the twenty feet is, you know, chickens tend to live in the coop full time and it's primarily about waste, uh, smell, things of that nature. That's why the twenty feet.
Right.
Um, again, something we'll have to research right now. It is considered a violation by our regulations. Um, but you know, pigeons are not as familiar to us. This would be the first time that we've actually, I think, had to kind of deal with it.
Yeah, I've not had uh, any pigeon.
So.
Complaints or otherwise. I would like to specify that these are particular rare breeds of pigeons that have, you know, uh, contributing rare features about them uh, that make them, you know, sort of prized pets. They all have different personalities, if you will. Um, so that is, you know, they're not, I, I'm not really sure if that would go, come into play, but they're, um, you know, not just typical street pigeons.
No, I, I kind of get that, yeah. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah, unfortunately, when we set our regulations, you, you can't think of everything and you found a hole. So we now need to figure out how we're gonna be able to.
And I do want to.
You, you might end up being very satisfied and you might, and you might not be, but we'll do our best to, to, to make sure that we're.
Yeah.
Um.
You're done.
I do want to add though, I, I did speak with the animal control officer, Jesse.
Jesse Sawatch.
Her. And um, she did make me aware that there is actually a family in uh, Newington currently that owns pigeons. So, and they've owned them for a while now in Newington and in her eyes, she, she told me this on voicemail, I had the voicemail. Um, there's no issues in her eyes. I understand this is a different committee. Um, but I would like, something I would like to know is for the research being done on your end is how long have they been in town? And you know, could I be treated the same as, as them, you know, because if I get the complaint came up and that's why it's on your guys' radar. They obviously haven't had a complaint, but now that it's here and it's in your lap, you know, I think it might be a good idea to base everything maybe off of that family and see how they did it or what's going on with them. I just would like the same fair treatment, is all I'm saying.
So I can partially, I, I, I myself spoke to the animal control officer and from her perspective, there is no issues with the keeping of pigeons. I spoke to the healthcare district. They have no specific regulations in regards to pigeons and the keeping of them.
Okay.
So they're okay with, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
How border.
I have not received any other complaints of other pigeons in town. This is the first time, so I, I don't know the other property maybe talked about. So those.
Yeah. Yeah, you could have the five acres.
And it's possible, it could, right. I don't know.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So we'll, we'll look into it. We'll get back, you'll get back to him, Paul.
Now, for a viol, just for my own knowledge, uh, since we're in violation, what does that mean for us the meantime till we?
Well, as I said, I, I think you should, yeah, yeah, we'll continue that conversation with Eric regarding.
Okay.
So again, you were sent the letter of voluntary compliance to ask you to get in touch with me and we'll have that discussion and.
Okay.
Okay.
See what we can do.
Everybody appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the board's time.
Everybody. Have a great day. Thank you. Anybody online here?
No one online.
I'm here. I'm here.
Oh, that's, sorry Johnny, this, so this is for public participation.
Right.
We'll get to you in a minute, Johnny.
Wait, so sorry, but do, do I have to be there? Because I got an email saying to webinar, because I could head down there. Do I have to be there in public?
It is preferable, but you can be either way. If you are close, feel free to come on down and yep, we're in public participation right now.
Okay, awesome. I'll be there in like ten minutes, but I'll stay on the webinar.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else wish you to come up for, for, uh, public participation items not on the agenda? Let's go up, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Monica Wazbiki.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes.
Speaking of microphone.
Just so everybody else can.
There.
Sorry, so good afternoon, everyone. My name is Monica Wazbiki. That's my first time attending the meeting, so I apologize if I'm doing something wrong. I'm a mother of the student who is graduating this year from uh, Newington High School. And I just want to bring to the Board of Education to the attention some issues which are.
The Board of Education is the next room down.
Next room over.
Sorry. Yeah.
Go, go right down to the end on the right.
Take a right, next set of doors down.
Yeah, no problem. Good luck.
Anybody else wish you to speak?
Sounds good.
Guys.
Um, no one online has their hand raised.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Zoning officers report. Eric?
So you see what's on the uh, report from this month? Um, not a whole, and it's been busy. Obviously, the things you don't see on here are blight, which I don't put on there because that's a whole different thing and it's equally as full at this time of year. Um, gotten a couple of complaints from about signs from people's houses. I actually don't have houses, but in front of their house, taking them. And uh, one gentleman came down and got his sign and put it, back on your property, you're fine. But otherwise.
All right. Well, Eric, as I said before, and I'll say it again, I think you're doing a great job. Uh, fifty-five illegal signs removed plus these, these violations here. It's almost becoming a full-time job.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, Commissioner Harvey.
Um, what, what, what kind of numbers do you have there being adjudicated through the court system that haven't been resolved yet, if any? Just curious.
So I have a, um, so, okay, uh, uh, in that regard, last week I was in court on a, a zoning case for another car issue on Stam Road. You guys come remember that one from a number of years ago. No, it's still ongoing, just to give you an idea. Yes, so that one's still ongoing. The other case is a combination zoning and blight, which is the other case that we're all aware of and that has a court date of July at this point.
Yep, July fourteenth.
So those are the only two ones that are involved in court.
All right.
So.
Okay.
Yep, and I think Commissioner Fox has his hand raised.
Commissioner, I promise you, you have anything to say, uh, ask?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
About Mike Fox or Chris?
Uh, thank, thank you, Eric. Uh, those are gonna say, oh yeah, that one on Stam Road. Uh, that's still in court? That's the one where uh, they just decided to open up a shop?
Yeah, well, it's honestly, it's been ongoing with vehicles at that site since nineteen eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, so he's been denied, he, that site has been denied for the auto related use at least three times from TPZ, from what I can tell. Um, you guys denied it once. He was supposed to refile. He never has. The judge got on him about that, so we'll see.
All right, be nice to get somebody out of court for change. Anyway, thank you, Eric. I agree with the chairman for once. Uh, you are doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? All right, moving on. Uh, remarks by commissioners, any remarks by any of the commissioners? Okay. Public hearings, uh.
None.
Okay, we do.
None tonight.
Not tonight. All right, that's what I thought. Yeah, and that's will be approval of the minutes. I'll move it. Uh, you're, you're, all right, I need a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? And on, all in favor?
Hi.
Those, thank, thank you. Uh, new business, uh, you want me to read it, Paul?
Nah, yep.
Okay. Edition TPZ twenty-five dash eleven, special permit for motor vehicle sales and service used at eleven, one eleven, uh, one fifteen Payne Road in the PD Plan Development Zone, application contact John uh, Accario, owner H and M Properties Holding LLC. Application uh, received five twenty-eight twenty-five, sixty-five days to public opening by eight one twenty-five.
All right, so I can kind of set this up just to say, I think Johnny is uh, driving right now, so uh, if you're not here, I'd recommend pulling over to be able to uh, talk to the commission.
Oh, can we just take B first and give them some time?
We could, if you'd like to, yeah, if you'd like to motion.
We take B first.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just need a, a motion to uh, move out of order and do B first.
Okay, we'll move it out of order. We'll move, move to uh, position uh, B. Public Act twenty-five dash forty-nine, House Bill five, five oh two, an act concerning housing and the needs of homeless persons. Public Act twenty-five dash forty-nine, House Bill five oh oh two, item.
Okay, so I think everyone kind of knows that this is ongoing right now. Um, as put in the staff report, this has been passed by the House, passed by the Senate, but it's waiting the governor's signature. Uh, there has been some reporting back and forth right now. We're basically, to paraphrase it, in the governor's, uh, what he said about it is either, you know, there's two options. He's received a lot of pushback, you know, a lot of things. His opinion that it's, you know, some are found, you know, some are a little higher on the, you know, you're taking too much away from the towns, you are, you know, for the, should I say, for the input he's receiving. Uh, he's also in, receives some input from the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. And it's either, it's paraphrases, it's either you pass it and work on it, or you veto it and get another bill. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Uh, we don't know exactly where the governor is gonna go with it. That's the governor's decision. But I've kind of put together something tonight for you. Uh, it did include the CROG, um, and a lot of this is based off this. CROG did a good analysis of this bill. All forty-two sections of it, uh, of a ninety-one page bill. But what I've done is kind of highlighted some specific sections. If you want to move to the next slide. So section two of this bill, so section one is to deal with housing authorities, reporting requirements that will not impact the TPZ. Section two, um, requires that we, the zoning regulations shall allow middle housing development, which means two to nine units as of right on any lot that is zoned for commercial use. Now, it doesn't say it's as of right without any requirements. We can still require a site plan and have zoning regulations for this. But this could be a little complicated, especially when we're talking about some areas of the Berlin Turnpike. You could see some areas where this could make sense, maybe off the edges and the peripheries, some areas that are adjacent to residential that maybe hadn't been, you know, haven't changed over, okay. But, you know, a two-family on the Berlin Turnpike is something that is, uh, doesn't really fit, um, or so this is something that we're gonna have to deal with, uh, if it goes through in this, in this format. So again, it allow this as of right, which means only a site plan can't be a special permit. Um, it also removes a twenty-two foot wide threshold for manufactured homes. So now manufactured homes, again, we cannot discriminate on a manufactured home coming onto any site. It doesn't say it can be, you know, a larger park on that one, although now if you allow the middle housing and you have that, again, what are the real implications of this bill? We'll have to be figuring that out. It does come into effect July first, twenty twenty-six, so at least they did give us a year, um, to kind of work on this on zoning. Uh, luckily, they did that instead of some of the previous bills that I've had to deal with, which will come into effect immediately. And you have these conflicts with your zoning regulations. Uh, it also dictates that we shall not require a minimum number of off-street motor vehicle parking spaces for any residential development. It does do a call out in the next section. If you have over twenty-four uh, units, twenty-four or more units, you are required to submit a parking assessment, a parking needs assessment. And that would be through that process, but that's a developer coming in saying, this is what we need now, future, this is the bus stops or whatever we have nearby for transit. Here's the public parking nearby and here's how we can calculate that number. And then we could only require up to a hundred and ten percent of what that parking needs assessment was. Uh, it also, again, that middle housing, that middle housing thing is kind of the big part of this, but that parking is kind of.
Defined middle housing, I'm struggling.
So basically, middle housing as duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes. It's also defined in section nineteen as residential building containing not less than two dwelling units, but not more than nine such units, including, but not limited to townhouses, duplexes, triplexes, perfect sixes and cottage clusters.
So they just found some weird way of saying that housing is gonna be allowed on a commercial.
Yeah.
And we call it the middle, which makes middle housing, it'll be no sense.
Yeah, the middle is that.
Cause, cause it's a little more than two families, which are typical.
Yeah.
So, okay, all right.
Yeah, so that's, that's what this section two does. So those are the three main changes in section two. Again, that middle housing allowed on a commercial that we'll have to figure out and then the no parking requirements, or should I say, no parking minimums. There still needs to be parking. We all know that there needs to be parking. You can't build something if you're not in a dense urban area with lots of public transit and public parking nearby. You can't necessarily, you know, Newington doesn't have that type of setup. Um, that's not how we are developed. So we'll have to kind of struggle with that a little and figure out how we can come up with these, um, requirements for parking, you know, what, what's the threshold? So moving to number three, uh, this even goes a little further. Um, so this is a bigger parking reform. So on this one, again, there'll be some clarification potentially, but no commissioner or zoning enforcement officer may deny any development based solely on a failure to conform with any requirements for off-street parking. Unless it finds there will be a specific adverse impacts on public health and safety. So what we're have to figure out is what thresholds kind of impact, hit that impact of, is there a safety? At what point does a review kick in? Again, um, so I will be going to uh, Connecticut Chapter, American Planning Association has a, uh, where planners get to their hot topics. I'm assuming this will be a very hot topic of the planners as we kind of discuss this. Again, this is every municipality, almost every municipality, some, but every municipality has this as far as the parking requirements go. So we're, as a state, we're all gonna have to come together and figure out what this really means for us. What, what mechanisms we can put in place and how we can just make sure that development is still being done properly. Again, my concern with uh, having no parking minimums is I don't want to get into a default position where we have to say everything is a special permit. Because if you have, we, we've had the benefit of being able to have standards for parking. That means that every single development doesn't require a traffic engineer to do a complete analysis of hours of every single little thing that's gonna happen, of future, what could happen with this property. It's kind of understood. This generally works and we're okay with it unless it's a special permit and then we look harder at it, because those are the ones I identified that could. Now, everything is kind of in that area of, okay, we'll have to figure out some standards, but we can't require minimum parking numbers. So that'll be a, uh, again, a challenge. And this is the section that talks about, you know, for residential projects, over twenty-four units, a developer shall submit a parking needs assessment. Again, available existing spaces that could be used, transportation options, current projected needs, and that's the hundred and ten percent. So again, there will be a lot of us figuring out what, you know, if and when a lack of parking will impact health and safety, uh, who can make this determination, what type of assistance we need as a town, what type of resources are gonna be made available to us to do these type of assessments. Um, that, that I can see is the most, uh, you know, pressing issue. So for a number, so moving through, and again, I can pause right there if you guys want to discuss those two, because those are, those are the two big ones that affect the zoning regulations.
Just on page three, uh, item number four, the mobile showers.
Mm-hmm.
Now, how would we ever see if they're in compliance with the health issues and whatnot?
Yeah, and again, that's why I didn't include those on my analysis and CROG didn't look at those, because that's a, that's a uh, state program that they're running a pilot program to do it, I think at least three locations.
Three statewide locations.
Yes.
In the state, so.
Yeah.
A hundred and sixty-nine towns, if not.
That's not many.
Yeah.
So the, the, obviously the state will be analyzing where the biggest need is and then figuring that out.
And is CROG gonna challenge any of these?
That I don't know.
Without bringing them on, in other words, the constitutionality of the state's interference in home rule and land use.
Yep, so there, there is a lot.
Just understand.
So what, what I would recommend is kind of, um, and again, looking at a chapter one twenty-four, eight dash two, which both of these changes are part of that. Uh, it's basically a, or like B and D were those two sections. There actually are already a lot of shall not do, shall do. We were already required to look at housing as far as the state P O C D. Um, housing is in there for two other items, so it has already been kind of dictated in that one. And this is the whole, and I keep saying, you know, federalism and the core of enumerated powers coming down to us that again, it's a discussion to have, but the state does give zoning authority to the towns. Uh, that's kind of my understanding.
Paul, is there still some question about, um, a hearing that never took place for the public on this?
That I do, yeah, it's, again, as far as the state's process, um, I haven't been, you know, drilling down or going into the, you know, the legal aspects. I'll, I'll leave that to the lawyers and the larger organizations who have the funding to actually, if they want to do a legal challenge. But for me, it's more along the lines of if this comes into effect, I need to prepare, uh, and help the community prepare, uh, for what this could happen.
Now, there's a homeless bill that passed a number of years ago uh, that dealt with the rights of homeless people. And there was discussion that they were gonna bring on some strength to uh, health issues and mental health and physical health. And all the people that came back from Iraq or Vietnam and still have issues. But I, I just think this is gonna be a real challenge, because it, it challenged, it's, it's, it's questioning our whole land use concept. That both of you know better than I, over a number of years, has been structured.
Yeah.
And if they were to, say they were to just leave these places, because they're mobile in California, they're mobile. So they get into a structure and then they're onto another structure. And uh, the problem with that plan was nobody was checking on whether they were deceased or asleep. And the police couldn't touch them because it was a violation of their human rights. So I'm not saying that we would get into a situation like that, but it seems to me there's a lot of stuff that we shouldn't just swallow and have to prepare for it without getting some collective group who's gonna look at this thing. Not because it involves homeless people, hey, God bless them, I know they're challenged, but because it doesn't really help them. There's nothing about education, nothing about, you know, the health, mental issues that you all hear about. Nothing in the legislation.
And I think as, how the town addresses this, again, as, from a policy standpoint.
Yeah.
Uh, for me, as, as the planner, you know, I'm not trying to drive your policy as a town. I'm trying to implement your policy. So, you know, from my role, I wouldn't be going to the state and saying, I don't agree with this, I don't agree with this, I don't agree with this.
I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah.
But in the California plan, if they had a structure like this, then they would just leave them. They really didn't have any relevance to them, you know, because they haven't been able to get themselves going. And then you had the dwelling sitting there.
Mm-hmm.
And it enjoined companies that were around it from even buying it.
Right.
Buying the vacant building and moving forward. So, um, I hope the governor thinks, I think he will, think about it long and hard before.
Yep, and again, I'll, I'm, I'm continuing to, to research and working through this bill.
I understand.
Yeah, I, I think the goal is, again, just to highlight some items for the commission.
My comments aren't too critical of the thing, it's just being able to really make it function.
I'll say, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner, I promise you, you have any, any questions?
I think it'll be helpful to hear more as this unfolds and if it moves forward, so.
Yeah, I, as I, uh, I had heard on the news that I guess he's gonna be calling a special session to go over this. Uh, because there's a, an awful lot of pushback from all over the state. Especially the towns along the shoreline, like Greenwich and those towns.
So I'll con, I'll continue on to the next section if you'd like me to, because there are, there are a few and I don't want to belabor and spend a lot.
Would you go back to, okay, John, can we believe in John?
Oh.
Okay, you want to do that? Okay, so we will move out of order and go back.
Yes, uh. Should I read this again, Paul? We all set?
Oh, we might as well, yep, just for the record.
Okay, petition TP twenty-five dash eleven, special permit section three point one, three point one, seven point eight. For uh used motor vehicle sales and service at one fifteen Payne Road in the PD planned development zone. Applicant contact John Ertrony.
Incontro.
Okay, owner of H and M Property Holdings LLC, application received five twenty-eight, twenty-five, sixty-five days to open public hearing by uh eight one twenty-five. Please state your name and address for the record.
My house address or the shop address?
Jerry, you prefer.
Okay, so my name's John Incontro. Um the shop address is one fifteen Payne Road, Newington, Connecticut.
Please speak in a microphone, that, that's.
One fifteen Payne Road, my name's John Incontro.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so at this point, what you do, so I'll, I'll set it up a little what we're here for tonight. Um it, again, this will require a public hearing. Uh this is kind of the discussion of there are a couple of things on this that um right now, as proposed, do not comply uh with the regulations and we've discussed it with Johnny, certain things that need to be moved back. But there are two kind of, actually, one really big question along this is back to parking. Uh on what the commission would consider the parking requirement. We do not have a parking requirement for um, for motor vehicle sales. Uh we have industrial, which has kind of been looked away, we have office, sometimes it's split out and we've done that. But um kind of to run through this site, to talk about the applicant's proposal and to give them some kind of uh guidance on where to go. Because ideally, this would be the first meeting in July um that we would have a hearing. And we can't have it at the next one just because of the publication time. But before we go into the public hearing, so the commission can provide some feedback um to the applicant on what could be changed on their plan, what your concerns are with the site. And kind of that determination, if you think, again, this can be under the uses, uses not listed can be determined by the commission. So, you know, it might be you asking them for a very more detailed parking plan, figuring out how many cars are for sale, where the customers are gonna park. Um that's kind of what uh, what the staff is looking for tonight from the commission. So at this point, if you would like to, I would like you to kind of explain what you're proposing to do.
I'm planning on selling used vehicles and offering um services to those used vehicles at that property at one fifteen Payne Road. Um there's thirty parking spaces, so that's why on my um narrative letter, I put ten to twenty-five park, or cars for display. I did not know there was a um, the thirty-five foot mark for on my survey. That's why they uh put it uh for the parking spaces for the cars where they are not thirty-five feet from the property line. I could always have that switch. I did not know that. Um. Yeah, most cars will stay inside. At night, there will be cars outside during the day, but most cars will be inside at night.
I try to do everything I can with my power to make sure that we work with an applicant to try to make them successful. And I'll be honest with you, I, with the way our zoning laws are written right down in this town. Um I think you could probably go ahead and move forward and get a repairs license there. I don't see us being able to allow you to sell cars there. One, our regulations don't allow the sale of used any vehicle in front of the building. You don't have a back of the building to even put a vehicle. Um I suppose technically, if you had enough room, and I don't know what your plan calls for, because I can't read it. I'm an old man. Um but there is a large section of the building uh that would be on the north side. Is that for?
So here, I just brought up his, his new survey.
So see that you've got the arrows pointing to the wash bay and repair service. What's the blank that right there, right where your cursor is? The white area, no, down, down.
Oh, that, so um the owner of the building is occupying that. I do have space in there to leave cars. And there are cars there right now. But until he can sell some of his equipment, which he's in the process of doing, um we didn't put it on the survey because once it goes to get inspected, uh it has to line up. But going forward, I'm gonna have all that space.
So, so again, for me, unless Paul and Eric can come up with some sort of magic to make it work for you. I don't know how we would be able, as a commission, the way our regulations are written.
If you, if you, you can also look here, follow my cursor, this is the thirty-five foot front yard. So you see a lot of those parking spaces. Pretty much all of them are pretty much in there. So as you know, the regulation reads no cars for sale in that area. So this is part of the discussion.
Which it's gonna give you maybe six, seven spots.
Yeah, these would be over here possibly.
You got those there.
In front of your office, so.
Well, the office, you actually walk in the other way in front of.
Yeah, but we're, we're just looking at spaces where you could sell automobiles.
I mean, even if um.
But even technically, again, you're, you're funny, you're, you're building a situation where they're all frontage, right?
Yeah.
You face the road. Our regulations are written that you can't have any vehicles for sale on the front of the building.
Well, that's fine, because um a lot of the sales will be online. So even if they don't have to be outside, they don't have to have a for sale sign, if that makes sense. I mean, I could do the sales inside or keep all the cars inside. The area's pretty large. You could probably fit realistically twenty cars inside.
It'd be pretty much like enterprises right now with the cars that they rent. Well, actually, and the way enterprise works, that the cars aren't there until there's a need and there's a need. But you go there by the weekend, the parking lot's empty and their storage inside is one or two buildings, one or two cars. Uh again, I, these two gentlemen will do everything they can in their power to come up with a way that'll allow us.
I appreciate it very much. I'm very cooperative too.
I don't see that happening and I hope that I'm wrong. So I just don't want you to, again, I think the repair part, I think that's easy. I think you have more than enough parking. I think you have more than enough space for automobile repairs. Whether you can make a deal with motor vehicle to get that license or not, that's a separate step, has nothing really to do with us. Actually, we don't even enforce now or regulate the location. It's now you. We used to be able to make that decision as a commission where uh gas stations and automobile sales take place. That now belongs administratively to the zoning enforcement officer.
Right, yep, and, and a repair use would still require a special permit. We, we, we divest all automotive uses into one.
I'm, I'm not slamming the door shut, but I think there's, you got a long road to be able to get approval from. Again, I'm only speaking as one commissioner. I only have one vote. Um picks four. So if you get four people, that will, you win.
Commissioner Harpy, are, are you, uh have you been directed to provide a revised survey?
We've had some discussions and since this is not the public hearing, you can just, this is what we had ready. So, and that's why we're having this discussion.
Yep, and I think, and a little bit of that too was uh, you know, that uh surveyor and engineer wouldn't be able to do it in time. And it was discussed like a rush job rather than actually come to the commission, get, get the input and then spend the money.
And I believe that's what I read it. He was willing to get a revised survey. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, um what's your expectation for a dealership, a licensing from the state? Are you gonna ask for a limited mechanical work or?
Um it'd probably be limited. I, I was more looking to do sales, but I would want to repair the vehicles myself, like to get them ready for sa- sale. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, are you selling anything now? You don't have to answer that if you don't want to.
Selling like vehicles? No.
And what's your background on training in mechanical work that you would? The application of motor vehicle.
My, I grew up in the automotive field. My dad had his own business for twenty years. Uh I worked at an auto body shop since I was fifteen years old. I worked there for eight years. And then I started my own detailing business. And where I was originally, um donor didn't want me to have a dealer's license. The, the shop I was leasing. And then I moved here for a bigger space and he said, yeah, that's no problem. He goes, go for it.
So you would not only sell a used car, you'd be prepared to work on it for the client?
If I needed to, yes. More like a one-stop shop. So they wouldn't have to be like, if there's something wrong with the vehicle, I can do it.
Different from most used car dealers.
Yeah, no, I would want to take care of the person, yeah.
Uh I think that's a, now, do you have a lift?
I do have a lift.
In the garage area?
I do. I don't do any repairs or anything like that now. I just do the detailing.
Well, I would um copy uh Mr. Woods or Chairman's comments that uh try to make this work if everybody can for you.
I appreciate it very much.
Mister Fox has his hammer.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fox, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the chairman, uh Johnny, you are uh going to be applying for a sales and repair license, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, uh I don't know what else to tell you. I just wanted to make sure that, uh you know, so in your, in your repairs department, uh you're gonna be kind of learning to your, your client, your, your clients. Or you're gonna be, you're accepting people like me, let's say, I go from over here, oh, I know a guy that I can go to repair, uh had my old car repaired. Or you'll just be servicing the cars you uh you sell.
I, I would like to only service the cars that I sell.
Okay, alright, that's right, sir. And again, I, I have to agree wholeheartedly with the, with the Vice Chairman Woods and with Commissioner, Commissioner Harpy. This is not gonna be a quick, hey, here you go, get your parking, this, that and the other thing. Where, you know, this is gonna take a lot of work by uh, by the uh CEO and us when it gets back to us. Uh and, and so uh, I wish you luck.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
I think, I, I think I'm uh not the only one that uh really would want to see that business go.
Sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Harpy.
I just didn't understand. You said that the cars would be moved outside during the day and inside at night. But you're gonna sell primarily online. Why are the cars going in and out of the building?
If they just need to.
They just need to.
Yeah, if they like need to go outside. So, storage wise, they'll always be inside. But if I need to move them around, they would have to go outside. Like they won't, if I don't, if I'm not allowed to have them on display outside, they won't be outside. They could just stay inside. But if I have to move them around, they might have to stay outside just for a few hours or whatever.
It's like, Mr. Harpy?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner uh Minor, you have any questions?
Commissioner Fox raises hand again.
Commissioner Fox said.
Yeah, don't sound so upset about it. Uh, uh, uh just, just one more thing, uh, thing Johnny. Would it be for, uh, and to uh the chair, would it be possible for, you know, to take a look at the property and everything? Although I think we all know it, but uh I just want to kind of re-familiarize myself.
Yeah, that's no problem. You could come by. I'm always there. Or you take my number and I show you around.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Minor still on or?
He is on.
Yeah, no comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yep, and the only thing, again, with that comment, that just advised of the commission that, again, we can all drive by the site, we can see it. Um, again, it will require, it's a special permit, will require a public hearing. Uh I wouldn't necessarily advise meeting with the applicant separately and touring the property. If it's something that you want to complete sidewalk, where you want to look at everything, that's something we could potentially schedule. But anyone and anyone can drive by this property and see it pretty easily from the outside. Um I'd just like to add, it sounds like from the commission, um like a, a, a good amount of documentation is gonna be needed for this. Especially if they are inside. I think you need measurements of the inside to show where the cars will be parked, how many are there, how many cars you're planning on parking. Um there's back and forth about whether some are outside, are outside, aren't outside. That's really gonna be need to be nailed down and specific. So this is gonna have to be a very specific drawing, a lot of information just because there is that concern. Again, just, it's an unusual property for this type of use because of our thirty-five foot regulation that you cannot park in the front. If we didn't have that, then likely it would work. But we do have that stringent requirement. And it's one of those ones where, you know, we don't want to put you in a position where you're doing great. And then all of a sudden, you don't have room for the cars, you're parking them out front and then we're pulling you in here and saying you're violating your permit. So everything needs to be very clearly detailed on what comes in for the permit.
Okay.
So Paul, you and Eric will look at this. Well, sorry, alright, thank you. Any other questions?
So I have the detailing business there too. So will that interfere with the cars being outside? Cause sometimes I'll have like five, eight cars getting worked on that day. They'll be parked out front. Those won't be for sale or mine. How would you want me to do that? You know, if you drove by, you see like eight cars parked within the thirty-five in parking spaces. You're gonna be like, oh, he's violating his permit, but realistically, it's for the other business. How would you like me to?
I think we would come up with a parking requirement for you, um how many cars that you can have or how, how many spaces you need to have outside. As long as the car can register, so you're your owner, Eric detailing them for the day, two days, they can go outside.
Okay, as long as, because I, I just want to make that clear, because I don't want someone driving by. That business, like I said, has eight cars in designated spot and then it's gonna be.
I think for now, you're okay.
Alright, thank you.
And I think the detailing wasn't necessarily listed, I think, in your narrative too. So that's newer to us that you'd be doing that. So you really need to really explain everything that you're planning on doing onsite.
Okay, okay.
And, and you may want to look at the plan with your surveyor and find, because there are, like I said, those five or six spaces that were in front of the office. Those might be your display spaces and you might label them.
Okay.
Clearly on the plan. And then the other, the other area in the front, you, you could, you know, labels transitional spaces or something like that that we know, just so everybody's kind of clear where, where the display vehicles are going and where other vehicles are gonna be working on detailing, et cetera, would be.
Okay.
And again, this will be up at the, so to the commission, but I think that's a, I think that's a good start that you'd want to see.
And Mr. Bonzavani is very accustomed to coming in front of his body. So he knows what I'm, that one's who, that's who you're using.
Uh, yes.
So um use him as an asset. He will help you through the process.
Alright.
Commissioner Harpy has one more question.
Do you have a system in place now for dispensing of oil changes and things that you?
As of right now, no, because I don't offer that, but I will. It's, it's um, I won't buy the equipment until I know I can get the license.
Okay, should that be?
Yep, everything.
Yeah, it's on the survey on where it will be. Um, like I said, I didn't purchase it now because I don't do oil changes and stuff like that.
I understand, I just, yeah, keep it in mind.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, yeah.
Alright.
All set?
Alright, John, and I would just, uh, if you're one, two, or all seven, I would just recommend a motion to table.
Alright, so I, I motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. For the record, keep you see twenty-five eleven.
All, all set?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you so much. Alright, thank you guys. You guys have a great night.
I'll go back to hospital five oh, five thousand two, or we all set with that, Paul?
Uh no, we got more. And if you say enough, enough, because I, just let me know. Uh so again, we went over section two and three. Um primary parking. An interesting one is section five, uh that actually not too many people have talked about. Uh we will have to update our section seven point six point two in response to this.
No, Paul, I have to go next door for a few minutes.
Not a problem.
Sorry to miss this enlightening discussion.
So, so this is going to be effective uh July first of this year. Um so interestingly enough, what they've done is the provision to protest a zone change or a zoning regulation amendment that affects a certain amount of properties. They've changed the threshold. Before it was twenty percent, that's codified in our regulations. They've increased it to fifty percent. So to pull a petition, and interestingly enough, if it passes, it passes now by a simple majority instead of a two-thirds. So this definitely kind of changes the uh calculus as far as the ability of a town to rezone a section of property. Um you know, me and Eric have had a couple of discussions, kind of thought exercises on this is what if an applicant comes in? Says, I want to rezone these four properties. One property owner doesn't want to be part of it. He has two of the, like two of the other properties or three of the other properties. You're kind of setting up for an interesting type of scenario there. We typically don't see that. I can say in Newington's history, from what I've seen, it is very rare that the town will zone a property without the. I can say in Newington's history, from what I've seen, it is very rare that the town will zone a property without the property owners being a part of that application. Um, that tends to just, to me, to be a good way to do it, that people have to be on board. Uh, with the changes of their property, there's always concerns with non-conformities. Uh, this again, we haven't really seen a protest, but this is an interesting little thing that's in there that again, changes it from a twenty percent to a fifty percent threshold and removes two-thirds major, uh, requiring it to two-thirds vote to a simple majority. So that's kind of been tamed down and it's a lot, uh, you know, it's lessened the ability of those within a zone change to protest this. So we'll need to update our zoning section regarding that. Uh, the next item?
And that's for this year, correct?
That's for this year. So this takes effect. So again, again, it doesn't, we'll just have to change that seven point six point two, cause we've codified this, but that threshold has changed from twenty percent to fifty percent upon signing. It hasn't been signed yet, so I'll, I'll remind you of that. So the next item?
Next item is uh, under.
I'm gonna go on this one. So the next section.
Next section.
So I'm not gonna go too in-depth on these municipal affordable housing plans. This is, this is one of the biggest, I think, um, concerns of a lot of towns. There's section six and section seven, uh, talk about it. So the main thing I wanna highlight about section six is we're still required to do our affordable housing plan that is done through, the council does adopt that. Uh, I do have that planned for next year. That's due May twenty twenty-six. But the new requirement for the priority affordable housing plan, um, so when that kicks in, we will have to have potentially things in that plan that recommend changes to the zoning ordinances. And then we're required to change the zoning ordinances in relation to that. And then when we go back on a five-year cycle on that, we have to prove what we've changed. So this is basically, I kinda look at it as the state had the affordable housing plan, they required every town to do it. And now they're looking a little more forward to, okay, towns, if you are on these ones, now you, it's basically to me an affordable housing, you know, affordable housing plan plus. It's a priority plan. You have to go further, you have to identify specific parcels, you have to identify more zoning, and it has to be a little more active.
To show progress.
Yes.
It's your PPO plan.
Yep, exactly. Again, but this one I kind of highlighted for you too, because this will require changes to the zoning regulations. Um, there's potentially priority state funding for infrastructure associated with it. And I know that's a bone of contention with some communities too as well. But we'll see how this plays out. Again, this will require some guidance. This is effective July first, but if you go over the next, uh, phase, but per this act, um, it's a staggered submitted based on town name. So with Newington, we would be in the June first twenty twenty-eight requirement, which means anywhere between June first twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight is when we would have to adopt this plan. So we have a little time, um, over the, you know, whatever the legislature works out on this plan to define it and to figure it out. But likely, by the way it's written right now, we would likely be required to do this uh, priority plan for affordable housing as a town. And again, for the TPZ's, um, impact on that one, it does require changes to the zoning regulations.
I have a question, Paul. We're still, each town is still going to be, we consider affordable housing is going to be, it's gonna vary from town to town.
So, right now, there's another section in there where they're gonna look at that. Right now, we're still ten percent. Uh, there's nothing that's changed that ten percent qua- requirement of your town. Uh, when we go to the next item on our item seven, that's when it gets into the fair share allotment. That's when we start talking about how they're gonna look at it. Um, would you look at it and say, okay, so this is, this kinda goes, this is the second one. So that's the affordable housing plus, basically, the priority plan. That will have to be, you know, my office will work on that with the town, but we're looking twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. This is, so the seventh, the state fair share housing allocation plan, this is definitely one of the hot button items right now amongst everyone talking about this. Is uh, the one item that immediately impacts us is per this, we're, we need to prepare and submit a vacant developable land inventory by January first twenty twenty-six. Um, so as part of this, we need to identify all vacant land by their definitions. We'll drill down on that. It'll be, you know, me and the IT department working together. They did just get a new uh, GIS technician. So hopefully we'll be able to put this together as a nice package and get it out there. But this is the one where I will need to do more research on this and drill down into what we have done as a town, how it relates to this plan, and we will need some extra guidance. And Newington has added housing units, you know, in between the time. Um, again, there's a lot on here, but if you go to the next page, um, this is kind of, so this is a, from the Connecticut Fair Housing Study, which is a hundred-page document, another one. Um, that, this is one of the tables where they do talk about this fair share housing allotment. Now, per the Act, it says to use alternative approach A. However, there are other items that they'll use alternative approach A, but there's a process in which towns have the ability to propose alternative numbers, but it will require us to do a lot of legwork to propose those alternative numbers. So that, that, if we're gonna go down that road, again, that's not a TPC decision to go down that. I think that's a council level decision, cause they would be kind of adopting these plans. Again, with the affordable housing priority plan. But to think about where we've, how much we've already done, again, this is looking at nine hundred and ninety-three units under approach A. However, they were using a number, so our, our twenty twenty census dwelling units is thirteen thousand two hundred and nineteen. Um, this, the, the, what they're representing is thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four for our housing stock, which is a hundred and fifteen more units, um, than our twenty twenty census numbers. But we do have apartments under construction. Uh, we have ones that have, likely this is, you know, with a hundred and fifteen units, this doesn't account for everything that's already even been built. So when I'm gonna be working on this, uh, uh, trying to take those numbers into account, see how it works in this. And again, I think there's gonna be a lot of guidance that does come out on how municipalities work with this. I'll be working with CROG, likely be working with Department of Housing. Um, this is new for all of us. So, again, provisions of the Act, you know, there are provisions that could modify this number that's required. So we will not know likely until February of next year where these numbers really sit. And we won't know even if, you know, based upon if this is signed by the governor, are there any changes? We do not know that yet. This is just kinda presenting the information I have now. Again, from a zoning uh, perspective, other than the plan, this only has an impact on a zoning perspective on, okay, if we have this allotment, then we have to prepare for it zoning-wise. Where's the appropriate place for it to go? Work from there. Uh, again, we will need guidance on this, and this is just kinda get that information out there. Everyone can read this plan. Uh, it's actually hyperlinked in the CROG uh, PDF that's out there. Again, um, if you have the time to read a hundred pages of it, good, I will be. I have been reading it, and I'll keep reading it, to just pull out these important pieces of information. Cause ultimately, I will be hopefully getting great guidance from CROG and from the COGS in the state. But it's gonna be incumbent upon us to kinda look at these numbers and see how this impacts our town.
Again, Paul, one, one of my, I, I still have problems wrapped in my mind around this, is that because all there's a hundred and sixty-nine cities and towns, uh, each one affordable housing, what they consider affordable housing is different. And I for, I don't know what Newington is, but Newington's pretty high. It's twenty-five hundred or something like twenty-four hundred for what they consider affordable house. Yet, I know in New Britain, I was talking to a lady, uh, Sahana, she said, I think it was a thousand or twelve hundreds considered affordable. I don't know what Hartford is, cause I haven't talked to them yet, Hartford.
Yep.
But with this type of variance, I, I don't see how you're gonna be, maybe I'm just not seeing it. How are you gonna be able to get that twenty percent, if that's what we go with?
Yep, and yeah, again, ten percent is required on that, but this is like on top of that. So you have your ten percent requirement under eight thirty G. And now this is talking about more of different type of housing units types. So, you know, will they say, again, we don't have those exact numbers? Will they say you need this many multifamily? You need this many affordable, you need this many affordable, I've seen like you need this many affordable family units. This might get down really nitty gritty into those specific types.
I personally, this is gonna change drastically.
I think so.
Before it's signed, so, I mean, well, I understand that we need to address it, but
Yeah.
we can't address it till it's signed.
Correct. And this is just, again, there's a lot of talk right now and a lot of worry about what it really means. And, you know, I'm the ever optimist.
Yeah.
I'm looking at things and, okay, if this is, if this falls through, however it gets modified, at the end of it, that's the reality that we will be dealing. And, but Newington has done, you know, a lot of these things. So that's something that I'll be looking to champion for our town and saying, this is what Newington has done. And, okay, if we do do a alternative number, again, that will be discussed with leadership, with my boss, uh, with council on what we're gonna go forward on this. But we do have a limited time if we wanted to do this. But again, this is all depending on what gets signed and what gets passed.
Any other questions, Commissioner Harpy? I just, I'm a little confused about the affordable term, because homeless people, at least in California, don't have incomes. They don't even go for their welfare checks. So, the percentage of the medium that they plug in to see if you really meet the need for that affordable unit, how, I don't know how they plan to, unless they're gonna put them on salary, you can stay job, I don't get it.
Yep, and in, 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 the affordability is a count of our dwelling units. It's not people. So it's like, yeah, how many dwelling units we have. And those who are unhoused do not have dwelling units. And that's something that the state has to struggle with as well too, about how they're gonna work on their programs. But again, a little outside of our reach as TPZ, uh, a little outside of my reach as town planner, just specifically go, okay, state, here's your programs. But yes, that is, it's gonna be a challenge. And again, it's a lot of unknowns right now. Uh, but again, it can change. And we'll definitely be keeping an eye on it. Whatever comes out at the end of the day will be what we have to deal with.
And we just wanna. They're not making land anymore, right? At least, I heard, so. Where are they gonna go, right? It's probably abuse of homeless people in general, actually. That's my feeling on it.
Commissioner Woods? Um, I was involved when the veteran housing went up in my, in behind the high school. Um, and there was a huge learning curve once the unit became, they thought that you could take somebody off the street, give them a home, and just walk away, and they were gonna be able to do fine. Took them almost two and a half years to figure out, no, there needs to be a tremendous amount of support. There needs to be a ton of guidance. They, you just can't pick somebody up off the street and put them in, and think they're gonna thrive. They need that support. And personally, I think that's where our system still falls down. Uh, we think we can throw them into a nice little clean new house, you know, whether it be one bedroom or three bedroom, and this, everything's standard, they're gonna have meals, they're gonna have a visiting nurse. It doesn't work that way. You know, they need a tremendous amount of support. They learned it, I think, in all fairness to them. They've worked around all those pieces, and I think the unit now, um, or complex is, is thriving. And I'm sure there's people that are, that they're not as happy as they were, but I know a management company has changed since I was involved in it, so. And I know there's some issues going on, but that, that's, that's life. But in general, I think it's a pretty well-run, um, and it, but it didn't just happen.
Yes.
It took three years.
Uh, Commissioner Fox has his hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I agree with Commissioner Woods, that, that the Victory Rain, uh, development, you know, was for, you know, homeless veterans coming back from deployment, et cetera, et cetera. And right now, I, in my opinion, I think they need some more. But we had a, a, a bunch of, a bunch of, uh, uh, of support, it's not what we had. We had a bunch of people that were worried, uh, number one about, uh, police and, police and fire staffing, school staffing. So when we do something like this, uh, we do run into a lot of opposition. And so, you know, I gotta agree with Commissioner Woods, we've got to find uh, the people, uh, or groups that are gonna support, uh, this, this kind of policy. Thank you.
We're kinda getting off track here.
Yep, yeah, so let's, uh, we can move on to the next slide.
Kind of a simple solution.
Yes. So there's a couple of our items, and I'll go through it to not keep you here all night.
So, Commissioner Harpy, any questions?
Oh, no, I just was gonna comment quickly that I know in Connecticut, there are multiple programs to different state agencies to support people that are low income and not necessarily homeless, like women and children that need affordable housing and, and others. So the state does have many programs to support people that are in that level of need. And not all people with, um, that need affordable housing have mental health issues.
I just addressed it from their comments, which was homeless people. That's the whole legislation about homeless people, which is the way they phrase it, I didn't write it.
Yep.
Anyway, well, any, any other comments?
Yep, so I'll go quickly through the other one. Um, this just impacts the towns. Uh, there's a ban on hostile architecture. Uh, which basically comes down to, of course, no bars, spikes, but also no armrests in the middle of, uh, benches, and it kinda goes down to that level. Again, that will impact just kind of towns and what we put in. Um, so again, it mainly would be like benches and anything like that. I haven't really seen hostile architecture. So that's, doesn't really impact us that much. Uh, seventeen is the eight thirty G appeal standard. Um, so they have now allowed courts to award attorney fees to the person who filed the appeal if found that commission's denial or approval was restrictions that negatively impacted the viability of the project, or the degree of affordability was made in bad faith or caused for delay. So they've strengthened eight thirty G as far as attorneys' fees for if, if municipality gets sued. Um, there's another item for a transit-oriented community program, uh, which I'll look into and see if appropriate, and then discuss with the commission. Again, it won't be just my determination, but it'll be looking at this and seeing how it could be applied. It's opt-in program. There's an opportunity for funding, but if you do not do the, implement the, adopt the zoning, you have to pay back.
Right, that's an opt-in too.
Yep. So, we can keep going. So again, the housing growth zone and accessory unit tweaks, again, not necessarily, uh, you know, actually, this one should have probably been pulled off. Uh, CROG said not applicable, but we'll kinda look into that. This is the transit-oriented communities. So again, back to that potential program for us to look into. Uh, eight thirty G moratorium points, it added stuff for, it kinda did a bunch of little bit of tweaks there. But if we work with our, um, housing authority, you could gain extra points. Again, Newington is at nine point seven three. Um, right now on the numbers. So, next year, as long as we don't lose Jaffa mortgages and that nature, we may be of.
A year ago, I think we were at seven percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of the big increase has actually been Jaffa mortgages.
Yeah.
Um, those count for affordability numbers, which helps us. And with the turnover in town and the amount of mortgages and the rates the way they are, Jaffa became a lot more attractive to people.
And does that include the program the state had too, where they gave you between a hundred thousand and fifty thousand for down payment on houses?
Um, that I do not know. I don't think it would. Uh, but again, we don't have any visibility on those numbers.
No, I'm just wondering, that's all, cause I know several people have, uh, jumped on that program. And it's been a, a, a boom for the, basically for the real estate markets, plus them, they're, at least gives them fifty thousand dollars down payments, covers the, uh, down payment and the closing cost.
Yep.
And if they stay there, I think it's ten years, it's forgiven.
Yep. So, the next item for affordable housing eight thirty G threshold, this is kinda what we're talking about. Specific number versus a ten percent, um, that they were, and go back one here. Um, that the Majority Leaders Roundtable Group on Affordable Housing will review the concept of replacing the ten percent with a flattened number approach. Um, so the, they're required to report by February of next year on that. So we'll see if there's any changes that they propose. Well, there's again, just a flat ten, you know, ten percent as it is now, varies as our housing unit has changed, or whether we get, it gets replaced with a flat number.
This gets signed, you better tell the town manager you need another employee.
Yeah, it, 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 basically, it's a, uh, for the next, if this gets signed for the next year, I am a housing planner. Uh, so the next, next page? And I think that was the last item. And this is again, one of, another priority housing development zones. Another opt-in program for us to look at, to see if it is applicable and it would work with our town. Um, and kinda go from there. Again, they've kinda gave us a couple of other programs to look at. The one thing, there are other things in here as well. There are other potential funding opportunities that the town will look into. Again, it's many sections, but I kinda just wanted to highlight the ones for you tonight that will impact zoning in one way or another, um, and impact kind of the plans that we have to go forward. So that's the, the gist of it. Um, that's all kinda out there. These are very similar to what you had with a couple of notes provided. If anyone wants a copy of those, they're here. And, um, we'll kinda, we'll go from there and keep an eye on what gets, what gets passed. And
We should know, I think he said, the next two weeks, he's always gonna call the legislature back in the session, specifically on this.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of differing reports. So right now, uh, it's one of those, I believe it when I see it type of thing, depending on what happens. Um, you know, it was, it was passed by the legislatures. It was not passed by a very slim margin. It, some had a little higher. Again, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but you know, it was passed by a lot of representatives from our planning region.
Any other questions?
Right, we'll move on. Uh, old business non? Old business non petitions for, receive for scheduling call.
Yeah, so, um, the one petition, and I did speak with the chairman, so this will be on the next meeting, um. Instead of the, have them come forward and talk to you, this is something you've already heard. This is for, uh, it'll be petition twenty-five twelve for one seventy-five Lowry Place. Uh, the pickleball place would like to go from seasonal to full-time.
Really?
Uh, yep, and, you know, we were encouraging when they came in, I think the commission said, I hope it goes well and I hope you stay. They very specifically asked for a seasonal use, so to kind of clean up their special permit. We've received no complaints, we've received no issues, it's good to see that being used, so. They will be coming for a public hearing at the next meeting for the commission.
That's great.
So you can know that, yep, you can, you know, visit the site, you can walk around, everyone can, it's an open space. Uh, so everyone can see it, but I think, I don't think the community has seen any issues, I've received no complaints. So they'll be for a public hearing at the next meeting, and there is a site plan, uh, modification. Uh, for one of the houses that was approved in the ridgeline protection zone, they want to add a pool. Um, so again, this is within the commercials, uh, commission's purview. Uh, a lot of the stuff with the ridgeline protection zone, a lot of for us, what the main thing is aesthetics. That you're not gonna look up on top of the hill and see an incredibly shiny beacon on top of the hill, that everything should kind of blend in there. The only thing, you know, this community does allow housing, uh, kind of within that area, but it does have those restrictions on. It needs to blend in with the hillside.
Alright.
So that'll be a question, they'll have to provide some information, so those are the two, uh, for scheduling.
Alright, thank you. Okay, they're ready for me next door. Uh. Any other report, anything else, uh, Paul?
Uh, nope, other than I have the town planner report, we know the current land use applications are out there, um, currently still discussing with. Things to get, uh, the numbers, I know that's been asked for occupancy, I believe it was not, uh, seventy-three percent, roughly. Yeah, about seventy-three percent for Mill Yard. Um, so they have been doing well, they are very, um, enthusiastic about their leasing rates. So, and I will get the leasing rates from the Pike and then I'll also reach out to, uh, five fifty as well. Um, the property there to see where they're at, but, um, again, Mill Yard has worked with the town great. Um, where we're gonna be going out there, they are finishing up their landscaping, um, kind of all those little leftover items from, uh, last bond. It'll be administratively released, uh, the commission approved that, and it's primarily just landscaping, making sure things survive. And making sure one of the hillsides stayed, it has slight slough, we had a concern about that last year. They put geogrid in it, and if it's vegetated and held, then we can release the lot.
That's it, alright, thank you, uh. Any communications, Paul?
Uh, no.
Okay. Public participation, second round, anybody wish to speak, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Um, no one online has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman?
Right. Alright, remarks by commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Just curious, how are we doing with the, uh, Taco Building?
They have not come in for their building permit.
I'm seeing nothing over there.
Yeah, originally we thought, and it was, it seemed like it was gonna be hot to trot and get going on it. We haven't really received communication one way or another, uh, but yes, uh, you know, they haven't submitted a building permit.
Right after they got approved, they did do a certificate of zoning compliance to make sure it was allowable use, I assume that's for some financing. So.
Right.
They do seem to be moving, yeah, not as quick as they had anticipated or related to us, that they wanted to get going on this pretty quick.
And they had another state permit to get, was it for the traffic?
No, they reviewed with OSTA.
Yeah, and they, they'll, they'll reach out to the state on that one, but typically, since their driveway doesn't connect to the Pike, it doesn't connect to that, but yeah.
Okay.
Typically would not require an encouragement.
Yeah, if they were gonna go for an entrance out onto the Pike, that'd be a different.
Thank you.
I'll second Commissioner Harvey.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner, want to comment anything? Commissioner Fox? Any questions? Alright, Commissioner, uh, Minor?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you, uh. Uh, thank you very much for all the participation tonight, uh, with that, I'll extend a motion to adjourn.
We'll move it.
I'll move. All in favor? Alright, opposed, thank you, we have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.